Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First, we'll have the approval of the minutes of the meeting held February 8th, 2021. Do you have a motion to approve?
So moved.
I have a motion. And second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. That carries. We'll move on to the persons wishing to address the school board on non-agenda items. We have three today, I believe. And I'll assume in the order they're on here. You will each get, since it's non-agenda items, we will not be able to make action or take any action on discussion today, but we will take what you've said to us in consideration. And after you speak, I can address some of that some more so you can know what the process will be and so forth. There's five members on the board here, so we will take into what you say today. But since it's not been posted on our agenda, we cannot make, take any action on it based on, we have to do it on agenda items. When you could come up to the podium, please state your name, your address, and the topic that you wish to address. Let's see. Other than that, we look forward to hearing from you. So I'll start with Antoinette Bida. Would you please come up to the mic and state your name and address? Oh, only two are, okay, you bet. Not a problem. And you'll have five minutes and Carly will show a little card when you have like a minute left. And then another one, you need 30 seconds so that you know when it needs to be wrapped up, if that makes sense. Okay. Lilly Keel or Cool?
Cool.
Thank you. Please state your name and address when you come up. I'm gonna have you stop and you, don't worry about the timing. We're gonna make sure that mic's all the way up for everybody. Thank you.
Some of us have a hard time.
It's okay. All right, okay. Hi, my name is Lilly Quill. I'm a current student at Roosevelt High School. I will be a new incoming student to Jefferson High School. As I'm a trans, as I transitioned into this new school, I have some goals that I want to be followed. I would like Jefferson to be a school accepting and welcoming of all students. I would like also that we could break our cultural biases so we could all grow together in that school. Today, I would like to share my own experiences. Day day in and day out, I would wear my bandana throughout middle school. All 348 days, I never was told to take it off. But as soon as I transitioned to high school, I was told to take off my bandana as soon as I stepped in the building. It felt wrong because they only saw a bandana, but they didn't understand the purpose of me wearing it. I was confused on why I had to take it off. Because I wore it my middle, my entire middle school career, but there was no problem. Why was it considered gang apparel in one school but not another? Another story of a student who faced discrimination because of their hair was Faith G., a current freshman at Roosevelt. When Faith was a student at Oscar Howe Elementary School, her hair was braided with beads on the end. She was told to take out the beads because they were distracting and that she would have to also take out her hair. In African cultures, beads are worn by people of highest authority. It was a status marker and represented beauty in the culture. So for a student to take off their hair because of a culture unknown, is it discrimination or is it just cultural assimilation? As a black woman living in South Dakota, there's a limited amount of hairdressers that are able to do my hair. So growing up, I would wear a headscarf or a bandana to protect my hair from the harsh weather. So being told to take it off at school would be an embarrassment to me because I would try to protect my hair. What I'm asking for you guys today is to consider the dress code to be respectful to all cultures and to be accepting to all students. Thank you.
Thank you very much. You did a great job and I really appreciate you coming here. I know it's not hard to come and talk to adults and you're not familiar with, so I really appreciate that. Next, we have Abigail Turner. If you'd stand, come up to the mic as well and state your name and address, please. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Abigail Turner. I live at 5124 West Emmett Circle. Today, I would like to talk to you about the current dress code policies at the Sioux Falls School District, particularly focusing on headwear. The current goal at Roosevelt High School, as stated in the school planner, is to have RHS be a place where students feel comfortable with themselves and others. The policy also states that students cannot wear or carry head wraps, scarves, durags, headbands, bandanas, or other head apparel. This policy is consistent with the one at Lincoln High School, but inconsistent with the current policy at Washington. Washington's current policy states that students may not wear, carry, hang, or display hats, caps, bandanas, or other head apparel during the school day. But students may wear headbands, head wraps, and/or scarves as it relates to the student's customary country of origin, religious attire, or ethnic affinity. The reasons current administration has stated for not allowing head wraps, durags, or bonnets varies from admin to admin and student to student. Reasons have been gang affiliation, distracting from learning, and not being able to recognize students on cameras. However, this type of headwear is conventionally associated with black students. In a year where all students have to wear masks to school, I feel that this has demonstrated how only having your hair covered can still make you identifiable. As we are still able to identify students who wear masks. What I'm asking for today is consistency. Consistency for students, consistency for teachers, and consistency between schools. Right now, students are receiving mixed messages on what is allowed and not allowed. As most teachers and administrators understand that head wraps, durags, or bonnets don't serve as distractions in the classroom. While others continue to penalize students for violating and varying policies throughout the district, we would like to see a district-wide policy change that is consistent with that of Washington's. Having these current policies sets a standard for students in what is deemed professional and acceptable. Without knowing, we are modeling for students to have implicit biases. We are sending a message that these types of wear are not appropriate or professional. This topic is not limited to only the school system. Earlier this month, I spoke with the South Dakota Legislature about the need for passing the Senate Bill 90, a bill dedicated to recognizing hair discrimination in the workplace. I wanted the black population of South Dakota to feel like they were being heard and that change is going to take place in the near future. While it was disheartening and frustrating to hear the senators choose to not have it passed, I still believe as a district, we can take important steps forward to protect the school environments black students are growing up in. Current policies at Roosevelt and Washington specifically ban head wraps and scarves unless worn for religious reasons. For black women, head wraps are worn to both protect the hair, especially in South Dakota due to cold temperatures, and as a cultural significance. Head wraps have been worn by black women since pre-colonial times. They represent marital status, family lineage, and social status. It is one of the few cultural pieces that enslaved Africans were able to bring with them. Many are decorated or colored to represent tribal status. This is a piece that is not necessarily religious, but cultural and should be accepted. I would like to share with you a personal story about when I wore a bonnet to school. It was the middle of my freshman year of high school. I woke up late and I did not have time to do my hair. I threw on a bonnet and went to school. I got to my first period class and my teacher asked to speak with me in the hall. She told me I needed to take off my bonnet because it wasn't allowed. I didn't feel comfortable taking it off because my hair wasn't done and I was afraid the students would make fun of me. I politely declined to take it off and she threatened to send me to the principal's office. I was a very shy freshman girl and I hated confrontation. So I took it off, went to the bathroom, and hid in the stall for the rest of first period and all of second and third. I called my best friend who was out of school that day. He came and picked me up in the back and took me home. My personal experience as navigating Roosevelt's dress code has created a less than pleasant learning environment. And I'm hoping that black students in the district no longer need to worry about this on top of their out-of-school concerns. I would like to close with the following statement. The goal is to have RHS be a place where students feel comfortable with themselves and others. By allowing students to wear culturally appropriate headwear such as head wraps, durags, and bonnets, we are progressively moving forward towards acceptance and creating a community that includes and respects all cultures.
Thank you. Just before we move on to the rest of the agenda, I'd like to thank you first of all for attending and bringing this to our attention. We are elected as school board members to take all stakeholder input and we really appreciate that. And I agree, you know, we need to look at this as the inconsistency alone is not fair, but also we need to get more input probably from community members, including students, on what needs to be changed. We have a policy committee that two of our board members are on, Kate Parker and Carly Ryder, but all of our emails are also on the district website. I see your two phone numbers on here and if it's okay, maybe they could reach out to you and kind of follow up and get some more information on this to see what the next steps can be to look into this. So thank you very much. Can, we'll talk after the meeting. Okay. Oh, she did sign up. Is that okay, Bev? If they're signed up, perfect. Yeah. Antoinette? Yeah, thank you very much. Just, I don't know if you were here before, but just state your name and address when you come up to the mic and then start and she'll show you. When you have a minute left and 30 seconds, you get five minutes total. Okay?
Hi, my name is Antoinette Bida. I live at 1109 North Advantage Avenue. I'm a student from Washington. I'm a junior and I'm also one of the Black Student Union leaders. I didn't realize that Lincoln and Roosevelt had different policies regarding hair and just hair coverings and things like that. At Washington, we are allowed to wear bonnets, durags, and headscarves. But the, I don't think it's in the policy that we're allowed to or we aren't allowed to, but there are some teachers who ask people to remove it. There was a time where my friend was asked to remove her bonnet while we were eating during lunch and the teacher was addressing her bonnet as a hat, even though a bonnet is something that many black girls use to cover and protect their hair. So we were kind of alarmed at first when the teacher asked her to take it off and we were confused on why he was even asking that. And when we tried to explain it, he was like, you can't wear hats in school and forced her to remove it off anyways. When you walk through the halls at Washington, you can often see people wearing bonnets, durags, things like that because it's not just something that they wear to protect their hair, but it also symbolizes them owning the fact that they have their natural hair and that they're taking care of it. Realizing that the other schools don't have something like that and knowing that I've been in those moments, such as my friend or such as Abby had noted earlier of being asked to remove it, it only makes me worry about how those type of students could feel out of school where they can't wear something like that, where they could go to school in fear for being asked to remove it and having their hair in a style that they wouldn't want it to necessarily be seen in. I tend to view bonnets as a way some people would see a messy bun whenever my hair isn't perfectly done. The right way, I'll throw a bonnet over it and I'll go to school just like that because at the same time, it's still protecting my hair. Head wraps can only be worn for religious reasons, which is something else that needs to change within the Sioux Falls School District. Because it's also seen as a headpiece that people can wear as a stylist part to help portray their personality in that sense. So basically what I'm mostly asking for is to see a change throughout the school district to not just empower the students of color, but just to also show that unity that you guys are all standing with them as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes. And yes, so we will be getting in contact with you because we'll, we'll need input and want to talk. And probably this might not be the only area we might need to look at all of this. So thank you very much.
I just want to also thank you for coming. You were all very well spoken. I can tell that you're, you, you well, were well prepared. And I really appreciate the time that you took to come in and speak. And like Cynthia said, it's not easy to come here and talk to us, especially as students. So very much appreciated that you did that tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. And if you get bored at the meeting and don't want to stay no longer, you don't have to stay. So we won't be offended. That's not a issue. Okay, we'll move on. We did not have any persons here to address on agenda items, so we'll move on to approval of the agenda, please.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion. And second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. We have approved the agenda. Move on to the good news report. Deanne.
Good evening. In addition to February, including School Board Member Appreciation Week, which we celebrated at our last board meeting, the American Heart Month and Black History Month, it's also National Career and Technical Education Month. As you know, the Sioux Falls School District takes CTE instruction very seriously. And it has been already more than a decade since we opened the state-of-the-art CTE Academy. In that decade, students have been trained in the 16 identified career clusters. Some have gone on to obtain four-year degrees, some two-year degrees, and some started working immediately following high school with special certifications in areas like welding and certified nursing assistants, of which we have a major shortage. CTE courses develop a skilled, sustainable workforce. And according to the Association of Career and Technical Education, baby boomers will be retiring at a rate of thousands per day in the next two decades. Experts predict 47 million job openings coming up. And two-thirds will of those jobs will require an associate's degree or a certificate. And nearly all will require real-world skills that can be mastered through CTE programs. Our CTE Academy has grown since it first opened its doors in 2010. We've added programs We've added programs like aviation and also computer science and technology with partnership at Dakota State University. Tonight, we wanted to showcase the career science and technical or in technology area. We have students Andrew Schmidt and Aiden Schramm of Lincoln High School. They put together a video about their senior capstone project, which involved the rebirth of an old electronic baseball scoreboard. So we'll watch that on video.
Hi, I'm Aiden Schramm. I'm a senior at Lincoln High School.
Hi, I'm Andrew Schmidt. I'm also a senior at Lincoln High School.
We're currently taking networking here at CTE. We did this senior capstone last semester.
And this fall, we'll both be pursuing a technology-oriented classes at DSU.
And this is a Daktronics baseball scoreboard.
The original version of the scoreboard lacked convenience and a method of control, so we created a web interface for controlling the scoreboard. We utilize a variety of technologies and programming languages.
So this is an Arduino. It is directly interfacing with the scoreboard, and this is a Raspberry Pi. This is receiving commands via the web interface and forwards them back to the Arduino.
The web framework uses Python. The web appearance and its functionality uses HTML, CSS, and JavaScript. The Arduino uses a code called Processing. Our future plan is changing the appearance of the web interface, adding a timing function, adding a function that allows us to work as a calendar, adding physical buttons, and infrared to allow us to control it with a remote.
Through the knowledge obtained through our instruction at CTE, in addition to our own intrinsic knowledge of technology-related things, we are able to realize our project with all our existing skills and that which we learned through researching and working on this project.
Thank you for your timing, allowing us to share our project.
Now, I feel like I need some CTE instruction to understand everything that they talked about, but clearly, they know and they made that board work. So, obviously, there, the skills they picked up and, as they said, their own intrinsic knowledge and curiosity, they were able to make that scoreboard, which has cumbersome controls, be operated through a computer-controlled system. And so, pretty great project, real-world experience, obviously, working on a Daktronics scoreboard. Thankfully, it's also a connection to South Dakota and Daktronics, and, and perhaps one, one day after their instruction at Dakota State, those students will be among our workforce because of what they learned in the CTE Academy. Do want to say that students in the Media Arts Program helped record that video, so there was some dual collaboration between two partner programs out there, both Computer Science and Technology and the Media Arts Program. And so, we thank Nathan Huffman from Media Arts and Brad Brockmuller from our Computer Science and Technology. And of course, Principals Josh Hall and Don Reiswick involved as well. When we talked about presenting a video like that, I said it would almost be pretty cool if you did it this way without coming down here to present. And so, I think it showcases the efforts and ability and the knowledge of our students at the CTE program. So, very proud of our CTE program, and if you have any questions, I'll try my best to answer.
Thank you. Thank you so much for showcasing that. What, it's so fun to see students in all of our buildings, and especially since we haven't been able to go into the buildings like we used to, to get that little taste of what they're doing is just awesome and really shows what, how important our CTE program and what other opportunities students have, because there's so many opportunities at the building as well, so that can go into Southeast Tech as well, Dakota State, SDSU, whatever they want to do.
Great partnerships exist throughout, and CTE is stronger and instruction is stronger because we have those great partnerships to lean on as well.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Deanne. We'll move on to conflicts of interest. I don't believe there were any new ones presented. Move on to approval of consent agenda. Items 9A through H, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We approve the consent agenda. Onto the supplemental consent agenda. Items 10A, 1 through 3, Claims to Sanford Hill. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That carries with one abstention from Board Member Ryder. Onto 10B, Claims to Vera McKinnon. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That carries with one abstention from Board Member Parker. Now to reports to the superintendent. First, we have Virtual Academy Report.
All right, good evening. Tonight, I bring you the report on the Virtual Academy. And the Virtual Academy was created last year to provide alternate education for students impacted by COVID-19. And so, tonight, we're going to give you an update of where we're at and where we're going with that. And if you think about all the things we do, they follow our strategic plan, and the Virtual Academy falls under District Priority 1, Student Outcomes, and Priority Statement 1, Provide a rigorous, effective, and engaging curriculum and instruction for all students in emphasizing growth and reduce that achievement gap. And so, like I said earlier, we developed it during the summer of 2020 as an alternate education model for those students and families impacted by COVID-19. Throughout the school year, we reviewed the information. We talked to parents. We surveyed them. We did listening sessions with Virtual Academy teachers, with students, administrators, and counselors to gather feedback and really look at how we develop and put a strong seal on that program if we develop something for the future, meaning it's a Sioux Falls district program and we want to be proud of that product moving forward. And so, first, we'll share some information that we collected, and then we'll go into the plans for next year. So if we look at student enrollment, in the fall, we started with 2,568 students, and you can see that breakdown by level. Then we gathered the information in November to see how our enrollment was maintaining, because we know that as people signed up for Virtual Academy, they expected it to be more like the remote learning. We did that emergency learning the last nine weeks of the spring of 2020, but it, it isn't. Virtual Academy is a rigorous program. Students have to be engaged daily and be in control of their learning, because they are in charge of that learning. So, the numbers dropped into November. We gained a few in high school, but at middle, elementary and middle school, those numbers dropped. Then the end of the semester, you can see where we ended, the end of first semester, 2,125 students total. And then we looked at rolling into second semester those numbers. And as of last week, we're at 1,966 students in our Virtual Academy in the breakdown by level. So then, we surveyed the families in November and to collect information regarding academic support, curriculum satisfaction, and interest in a Virtual Academy option moving forward for the Sioux Falls School District. And the first question we asked was, were you satisfied with that academic support for your, for your child? And you can see 78% of the elementary families were satisfied, 65% at middle school, and 78 at high school. And then we asked, how about the curriculum? What'd you think of the curriculum, knowing that, you know, we really were trying to find that right match for families? But again, it, it's different because it's online learning. And online learning, you're in charge of that. You have to take initiative. You have to have a certain level of reading. You have to be able to communicate with your teacher and writing and, or reach out if you're struggling. So it is different learning. At elementary, 54% of the families were satisfied with the curriculum, 62% at middle school, and 77% at high school. Again, the, the higher, the more you're able to access that information. You know, it's reading to learn versus learning to read, that whole piece. So you can see the differences there with the levels. And then the last one, parents, we asked the question, are you interested in a Virtual Academy option for next year? And the total respondents in this survey, it was about 50% of the people that were enrolled in Virtual Academy. So out of that 50%, 294 elementary families were interested, 224 middle school, and 256 high school families. So then, we looked at that academic progress. We reviewed that at the end of the first semester to ensure students were learning at high levels in that course progression, attaining credits for high school. The review of the students' grades and credits at the end of the first semester listed here do not include the 682 students that were pulled back because they weren't making progress. They weren't doing their work. So the numbers here on the screen show that 33% of our students in elementary for the English Language Arts did not attain expected grade-level standard, and 31% of the elementary students did not obtain those standards at, for math. And so, that's out of those students that were currently still enrolled at the end of the first semester. And then, middle school, 50% of our students did not receive a passing grade in ELA and 56 in math. And then, high school, 63% of our students enrolled in the Virtual Academy did not obtain credits to move forward with their grade-level cohort or stay on pace. And so, that really gives us pause and concern because we want what's best for the kids and to make sure that they're moving ahead with that curriculum and that knowledge to jump back in next year as, as they move forward. So we used all this information to develop the Virtual Academy for the fall of 2021. And when we looked at that and the feedback offered, we're going to offer Virtual Academy for students' grades 3 through 8. And knowing K-1, 2, really need those strong foundational skills and to be able to read and write at a certain level to access the information. And at high school, they have many different models that they can use within the high school that is a blended learning format, where they are in class a couple days a week, and then they're out of class on those other days. And so, they have a model in place to help support that type of a virtual option for, for high school students. But at 3 through 8, we'll do a Virtual Academy like we have this year, and I'll run through the differences there. But again, using the feedback from all the different, the parents, the teachers, the counselors, the concern for students being able to move forward with their cohort, we wanted to make sure we had accountability measures and flexibility for families. So it's a tuition-free option for families. We're going to utilize the Sioux Falls District curriculum with our teachers, and that's different. We used Calvert for elementary and we used Edmentum Courseware for middle school, but we're going to use the Sioux Falls District curriculum, which allows if a student chooses Virtual Academy for next year, they'll, they will use our curriculum with our teachers, more intense support from our teachers and contact. But then, if they decide to jump back into the in-house learning, they'll be right where they need to be. And so, that was very important when we talked to teachers, families, and counselors and admin. And then, teachers will be available Monday through Friday, 8 to 4, which they currently are, but they'll host those synchronous learning lessons. They'll make consistent contacts with students and families and respond to questions, give feedback, and provide guidance. Hence, teachers will also monitor their success. And the curriculum is aligned with that current grading window. Students will be graded on work assigned within that grading period, but they will be given on the beginning of the week, this is what you need to have done by Sunday, and that's to stay on pace. And if those aren't met, they'll be pulled back. So, enrollment into the Virtual, the Virtual Academy that will start tomorrow. Our application will open up at 8 o'clock tomorrow. It'll be online, it'll be open for a month. And so, families who are interested for Virtual Academy for the 21, 22 school year can fill out that application. And there is enrollment criteria, where last year we did not have that due to the pandemic. But this year, they will have to meet criteria to be allowed to participate in the Virtual Academy. So they have to be within our Sioux Falls District boundaries or currently open and enrolled to one of our schools. They have to have internet connectivity. We give the NWA MAP in reading and math to students in grades kindergarten through 8th grade, so 3rd through 8th have those scores. So they have to be at the 40th percentile or higher in both reading and math. If they're an EL student, they have to have a WIDA reading score of a 4.0. And if they were enrolled in the Virtual Academy this year, they have to have demonstrated consistent engagement, adequate progress, and course completion. And if they meet those criteria, then they can be in the Virtual Academy for next year. And the curriculum we talked about, the curriculum, they will use the Sioux Falls District curriculum, supported by certified and experienced teachers. Will have embedded supports with that online curriculum. Students will engage in their online courses, including virtual class meetings, independent learning activities, and each course has weekly deadlines for assignment completion. They can participate in before-and-after-school activities that are provided by their home attendance center. And any, if they're in 8th grade and they take that high school courses, they have to follow those guidelines according to those high school courses, too. And then, we have that academic accountability, because they are part of our school district. We have to make sure that they're evaluated according to our policies. The Virtual Academy teachers will provide an outline of the weekly assignments and expectations. They're expected to complete those assignments, attend the lessons, maintain progress. And if students are not actively participating in the courseware, the district will help support them. And if there's no progress or minimal progress on keeping on pace with weekly assignments, the students will be returned to the school or truancy will be filed. Testing requirements. We are required to test the students according to the South Dakota Department of Education, and they will take the NWA MAP assessment three times a year, fall, winter, and spring, and they will come onsite to a proctored setting to take those assessments. Our district semester test for students taking those high school courses. And then, the Department of Education's state assessments, so our ELA math and science assessments, and those, again, are proctored onsite. Just like we have to do this spring for anybody that's in Virtual Academy, they will have to come onsite to take those, and that's a requirement by the Department of Education. Any special education assessments that need to be done will be done on our district site. And then, the WIDA access testing also, and those are required to be a part of the Virtual Academy. And then, school-sponsored extracurricular activities And then, school-sponsored extracurricular activities and classes at elementary, if they would like to participate in band and orchestra, they can, coming into the building to do that. Middle school, same thing, band, choir, orchestra, or those activities at 7th and 8th grade. And so, with that, I would stand by for any questions and ask that you acknowledge the Virtual Academy Board Report.
Thank you. For clarification, you stated that internet connectivity is a requirement, but we do work with families if they do not have that, so that if that is not in their home, we will work with them to make sure that they have.
That's correct.
For the public, I would like to make them aware. First, love what these changes. I know we kind of had to come up with a plan very quickly for this school year, so maybe it wasn't a perfect plan, but it was a plan to help accommodate families, especially with health concerns and so forth. And I think you took input, you learned from what we were doing, and have made a better plan going forward. I think our product, our degrees, our students have to meet our standards, and some of these things weren't, and so that is why these changes are being made, and I think these are good changes to do that. What is great to me is I love seeing the percentages of academic support, something we actually controlled in-house, that was very high.
Yes.
And that what we're changing is the curriculum, and I think our curriculum is amazing, so I'm glad we're going to be using the Sioux Falls School District curriculum, because I think we can better control than how that is taught, how that is monitored, and so the rest of the district. So, thank you for all that.
I was concerned with the, certainly with the middle school reports, and the, well, just that the kids weren't passing their classes. So, I was glad to read further that we were going to go with our own curriculum, as Cynthia said, and using our teachers and our supports, and I feel much more comfortable now having our students between, you know, those grades 3 through 8 with that, but it was a concern at the time when I first read the report. But it seems like we've heard and listened to everybody and taken that all into account, so glad to see this moving forward.
I think some of our highest-risk kids academically that we've talked numerous times about are those K-1 and 2 kids, and so, it's really sad to see the number of students in that, and I know we didn't break it down by that grade, but I know for some parents, they didn't want to send their kids to school, and we all had fears this fall, and so maybe people didn't understand the commitment that they were making, but we are all working so hard to get all of our kids who are in school to be at level by 3rd grade. And so, it's really disheartening to see now the students who maybe are going to need a lot more extra help because of, you know, the decision to do the Virtual Academy. So I fully support really making sure that we get those kids in person, because they do, they need that social interaction, they need that academic instruction by a teacher who is skilled and has many multiple techniques that they can utilize to try to engage that student. And so, I'm glad to see that. And I knew, as having a high school student, you know, she, my daughter has taken a couple different online classes while also taking classes at Lincoln, and so, I agree, we have options that are great for students. They can take an online class and sit in the building if they want to, or they can take an online class and sit at home. And so, I think that there is a really good mix of options available to our students that will work well for that age group, too. And so, I agree, I like the sticking to what we know. What we've worked so hard on is our curriculum here, and so, that's really going to be a gift to the families who choose to do that next year, and having that synchronous learning, I think, will be very helpful as well, so really positive changes. And I appreciate the families who gave the feedback, because without their honest feedback, we wouldn't know what changes to make or what needed to be done. So, you know, sometimes people get surveys, and they're like, you know, it's another survey, but this really does help us as a district guide what our offerings are for the next year. So, I'm assuming that Deanne will have something go out tonight about registration for the next month, so.
Yep, we're going to put it out Wednesday morning.
Okay.
I mean, it'll be in District Dialogue tonight, but then we'll put it out Wednesday morning. We'll do a few field tests with that app, but it looks really good. The application is simple, but again, it's an application, and then we'll, at the end of March, we'll run that and compare it against the entrance criteria.
Sure.
And notify families.
Thank you very much.
And I think what, to circle back on the report, we just had on summer school options that we're offering, especially for our younger elementary kids, that's an opportunity for us to help those students to catch up, especially if they were in, you know, not able to succeed in the Virtual Academy or in our buildings as well, due to being on quarantine or whatever, too, so that we can have those, help those children get to where they need to be on that. So, thank you so much.
Thanks.
Any other questions or comments for Dr. Boyson? Seeing then, do I have a motion to acknowledge the administrative report on the Virtual Academy for '21-'22 school year?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That is acknowledged. Now, Ted, on legislative update, please.
Thank you. We're going to go over the key bills that you've approved in the past, but before we do that, we missed one last time, and it's on page 13 of your document, Senate Bill 175. It's a cleanup bill, dealing with certain eligibility requirements for the Partners in Education Tax Credit Program. Now, we've always, we've opposed the bills establishing this and trying to increase it, but this is really just a cleanup. It shouldn't affect it, so we just say no position on that bill. So, that was a new one, the only new one, and it's because we missed it last time. So, just on the key bills, we have nine key bills that the Board has approved to date. Five have died of those. We opposed four of them, and we wanted an amendment on one of them before we would support it. So, I guess, success rate is four and a half out of five on those key bills that have already been disposed of. So, the bills that are left, House Bill 1108, that's on page 4 of your bigger document, that is, that's the playing of honor songs, the graduation. We oppose it. It's scheduled for hearing in House State Affairs on Wednesday. So, oh, and by Thursday, they have to clear the House of Origin, so pretty much, if they don't get out this week of their original House, you know, they're going to have to act on them, so they won't be delayed anymore. House Bill 1217, we also opposed, it's promote continued fairness in women's sports, is what it's titled. That was up today, but I haven't heard from our lobby. It was not on the internet, or it's not on the internet yet, and I haven't heard from our lobbyists on what happened on that bill yet. So that was up in committee today in House State Affairs. A bill we support, Senate Bill 49, that's the Governor's proposed 2.4% funding bill that got out of, was in Senate, it's a Senate bill, it was in Senate appropriations, they moved it on to join appropriations. So those appropriations bills are a little different than your regular typical bills. So, that has been waiting to be heard in Joint Appropriations Committee. And then, we talked about 175 being a new bill, but not key. Then, the other key bill is Senate Bill 177. That is the homeschool bill that passed the Senate. We oppose that. It passed the Senate, 21 to 14. It's been assigned to House State Affairs, because they've got to get the House of Origin bills out this week, probably be scheduled for hearing sometime next week, but we don't know when that is yet. So, unless there's any questions, I'd just ask you to approve the one position and then acknowledge the report on the key bills.
Do I have a motion to approve the one position and acknowledge the legislative update?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That is approved.
Can I just make a quick comment?
Yes.
I'm just thinking about the report that Dr. Boyson just gave about the lack of accountability, and we have our students who chose to do Virtual Academy and still struggled, even though they were signing up for something that they were saying they had the support to do, and they were given the curriculum to do so. And so, I just want to, my comment is that this bill seems very similar to that type of a setup, where we're not having any accountability for those students, and parents could very easily sign their child up to be homeschooled and then not take the commitment seriously to actually get those children in education. And for some of these kids, it's not even just the education, it's the food that they need at school, it's the supervisory or supervision from a teacher or a counselor or a principal to notice that there's just something that's not right. And I have friends that homeschool and do a phenomenal job, and so, this is not a knock on homeschool people, it's the people who don't do it well or don't take it serious. And as we looked at our numbers today, and we see how many of our own students who we were providing the information to struggled to succeed, it's very scary to think about what would happen if we just allowed people to make that decision with no curriculum and no support, to be on their own and expecting their children to succeed at any grade level. So, just my, probably more than two cents, but I think that was an interesting juxtaposition of one report to the next, so, thanks.
Good one. Good, Carly. Onto appointing the Board members of the School Board to Board of Equalization, were there going to be some changes? Because then, we can just do that here, because I heard you two talking. So, Bev nicely put up a little agenda for us for this Board of Equalization for March. Do I have an amendment to that?
Nan is going to take over Friday, 9 to noon.
And then, are you taking one of hers, or is that the only?
No, I hate to take them away from her, so.
So, do I have a motion to approve the Board of Equalization? Oh, let's vote on the amendment first. So, first, do I have a motion? We have that motion, do I have a second on the amendment to add Nan Baker and remove Todd Toki from the?
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Motion second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Now, to the full slate, new updated slate of equalization, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That is approved. Anything else for the good of the Board or meeting? Just, March 8th is going to be Teacher of the Year announcement, and we have some different dates coming up for our work sessions based upon budget, so just be watching our website for those dates, so that you make sure you have those correct if you would want to attend those. So, thank you very much, and do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We are adjourned. Thank you.